Yeah, yeah, we don't have to do roll call again because we're still here. Maybe physically we're here. I have to leave at three, but we'll still be here physically. But I'm checking out soon. Okay, we're all on to item number two, which is discussion and update on the performance framework templates and the status of putting the corrected templates to the PEC website. So the changes to the performance framework and the business rules. I still, to this day, I'm still trying to figure out where that came from and what it actually meant, but I always knew what meant no. Okay. Well, I'm assuming you're doing the, yeah.
Apologies Chair Gibson, I'm joining as a panelist now so I can share my screen. So item 2A1 in the Google folder is an overview of the performance framework and business rules changes made since the last work session. And at the Performance Framework Committee's direction, I removed the footnotes from the Performance Framework section and moved them either into the text itself or into the business rules and added a section at the top of the business rules before 1A for things, for footnotes that applied to both 1A and 1B. So I, I, I won't go over those individual changes unless the commission would like me to. I assume that you've all had a chance to look at them?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, anything else, student groups? No. No, I don't think there's anything else I need to call the commission's attention to.
There are one, two, three, four, five, nine schools that negotiated last year that we would need to approach with an amendment explaining the substantive change, also letting them know, and then we would redo their performance framework. So actually tomorrow I have a motion for the chair to start that process.
Can I ask one question about that? Do you, would you anticipate that any of these changes would negatively impact any of those schools? I think they're all going to get better for them.
I don't think so.
I think so either.
I don't think so.
That would, that would have been my only concern, right? Is, is if it's going to make it harder in any way on one of them, then they might be like, nope, don't want to do it kind of thing. And I think they're all, I think, and if, as long as the letter can explain, you know, I think it'd be important in that to be like, you know, we want to provide additional clarity or this will allow for a more precise calculation is most of them.
I feel like the major substantive change is that a school would have defaulted to one and now they go down that one step. If they don't have sufficient students taking the test. And so maybe some, I don't know what the.
I think it'd be important, I think it's, I think it's still a good thing to let them know, like you would not, we would be unable to rate you in this required indicator if, if we do not make this.
Well, and we'll know if they object or not, so they'll let you know.
Right, so for example, a high school whose 1B is unrated, they would, thank you so much, they would be, they would be rated based on an attenuated, and if, and if they don't want that, then I guess those few schools in that one cohort, we've, we've learned our lesson.
Yeah, they, they can say no.
But you have the same obligation to look at an amendment that they're requesting as they do to look at amendment you're requesting, there's no difference.
It's just unusual.
Yeah. What un, what not unanticipated. Okay.
Um, so would you like an update now on 2C, the templates?
Sure.
I know you think I'm going to tell you that we're still looking at them. However, Dr. Faulkner finished, absolutely positively finished, and Lucy uploaded today four of the five templates. They are on the website now, all but the PSAT SAT. Dr. Faulk, Dr. Faulkner is making some last minute adjustments to that and it should be up today or tomorrow morning at the latest. And I've been reviewing.
Ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Search out there?
Yes. That one is not up.
Okay.
Option two is up except for PSAT SAT. Option three is still a work in progress. Yes.
Then I, I noticed today that the actual 3C indicator document is not posted on the website. So the assurance document referencing it is, but the. So you can show me later if it's there. I think there's, I saw two links to the assurance documents, not to the document.
Annual compliance requirement for. You, you are right. Oh, they are both there, yes. So under supporting documents for the performance framework, the first bullet is business rules. The second bullet is the governing board assurances for the compliance requirement. And that one, that is the, the board assurances is the second bullet. And we should probably hyperlink the whole thing so that, so that it says hyperlink governing board assurances for, for annual compliance requirement. But if you click on, if you click on this, the annual compliance requirement, what comes up is here is, it's the annual board assurances. It's the form for the school to use. And the checklist is the next one.
It's a download of an Excel document that has all the compliance.
Comes up with the message download.
Items.
So, so the second bullet brings up this document. Oh, I'm, I'm, it won't share if I, yes, no, I've got it. But I, I opened, I opened the document, so I have to share the Word document now. So it brings up, this is the document that I just downloaded.
So I'm just going to ask, and I don't want to get into a deep conversation about it, but I'm not capable of a deep conversation right now. Or ever probably. Is the challenge with Cesar Chavez, is it with the reporting template for their short cycle? Or is it the, the other pieces that's the big challenge?
It's all the pieces. It's, and honestly, the, the challenge has just been that we have been focusing on the option two templates and just trying to knock those out first. And simultaneously, Dr. Faulkner has been working with a contractor on trying to get some reports from NOVA for the 2324 school year because we still never had enrollment data. And we didn't have attendance and retention and recurrent enrollment. And so those things we've been working on, once, once the option two templates are up, then we can turn our attention to option three and really start digging into it next week.
Because I just, you know, I'm just making an assumption that the schools that are, that are contemplating option three this year may be looking at that just as a, you know, as a little bit of a framework and.
Absolutely.
Trying to make their journey through this a little bit smoother in, in how they're figuring it out, so, okay.
So one, one of the things on my list to do once this week hurdles are done is to, to take that very large, very cumbersome, kind of scary Cesar Chavez option three template and sort of put it in a more viewer friendly, user friendly.
Dummies?
Option three for them, option three for me. And I have.
I need it.
And I have already met with Albuquerque Sign Language Academy and Los Montañas Charter School separately to talk about option two versus option three. Here's what it could look like. So they're, they've already started doing that work.
Right, and that's why, you know, I don't want them to get caught up in doing this when this could change.
Yes.
And that's, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, and I know they're not deep into it yet.
They're not, we're just talking about what are the assessments? What are the metrics? What's it going to look like? And I've told them, don't, don't even worry about that, that spreadsheet because it's like, we're going to, we're going to simplify it because, yeah.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. Sure.
And, and I, this is kind of a little offshoot, but I know we did something where the deadline is, is November 22nd, right? That they have to determine whether they want option one, two, or three. Is that.
Look at the schedule to be absolutely clear because it was the schedule that the PEC had approved.
Right.
And it, remember I had originally developed one and then it was edited. And so I can look for it.
We approved it.
Right, and you all approved it, so let's find it in the meetings material.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any spot to change it on the agenda, like for tomorrow, so.
What is it that you're trying to change? I think it still works.
Yeah, I don't think.
I know, but I just want to be reminded what it, what it is.
22nd, they need to identify if they're doing options one, two, or three. The decision that we.
Julia, can you tell us where it is, which document?
Missy, you know where it is, but if you go into folder number three, fiscal year 25, the admin folder.
I'm totally lost.
It's the fiscal year 25, it's the second document.
Oh, I got it. And then.
On the 22nd of November, the schools have to let Missy know, go down to the 22nd, one, two, or three. We had, the one thing that we emailed about last week was the issue really for setting a date as early as November 22nd is so that CSD had time to do new templates.
Right, 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 right.
If they do not tell Missy by that date, they may not say, oh, I have a new template for you to draft.
So, so on the 22nd, if they choose option two and they use a new assessment, do they have to tell Missy, we're choosing option two and we're using this new assessment? They got to do both pieces to that?
Yeah, that's B. Do you see, Commissioner Beck, B says the alternative assessment indicators they will use.
Okay, 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 good, good. All right.
If one doesn't tell us for a month that they're going to use NWEA, it doesn't matter. It's ready now.
Okay. I, I got that. If they, if they fall asleep, don't say anything on the 22nd, we'll revert back to option one, is that correct?
That, that was just the change we made last.
That's okay, that's what, yeah.
If we already have a template, there's.
Very good, very good, right.
They could tell us option one, and then in the contract we put in option one. They put in option two, and then we put in option two, end up NWEA. There's no.
That's fine.
Has been done.
That's fine. Okay.
I was about to say.
Oh, yeah, oh, here's, but here's our new assessment. Okay, I got it, perfect, there you go. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. I think we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Number three, discussion of the new school application process and possible changes. This once again is our third reading, so there were no changes made to it since our, since last month.
Since you discussed it, we incorporated what you asked for.
I, I, well, I, I see one thing that is, that maybe the incorporation didn't completely happen. So on page, on page five is the discussion about what they have to do in order to not have plagiarism. My understanding was from the PEC is that you all are going to do an initial plagiarism review and then it's not looked at again. So it should not be one of the criteria.
Can we share screen, can we share screen on where in particular you're looking?
I don't have, I'm not on Zoom.
I can share screen, are we looking at the changes accepted version or the red line?
Looking at the changes accepted.
Okay, I'll share screen.
You're on page five?
The change is on page 11, for example. So on page five is the language that the PEC wanted about what you're supposed to do. But my understanding was that the decision was, CSD at the beginning is going to look and see if they have any plagiarism concerns. Then it's over. So it should, I can't quite find where it should say that. But then on page 11, does not meet criteria, would not have a number five plagiarism information because that, just that review is already over. But I think, I think it was Commissioner Bird who said, we're not going to do it again and again and again. We're going to do it once, it's going to be over.
Wait, okay, so. So basically, it, it just shouldn't be in the does not meet the criteria on page 11 because there, there's, it's not a indicator rating method.
Okay.
Like if they plagiarize, their whole thing is disqualified. It's not an indicator.
Just plagiarizing information, whoopsies.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
That, so just, so strike this.
Yes.
Right, because they won't get a rating of the whole application because the application's been turned back.
Got it.
So I would like to be clear, let's, let's go back to the place where CSD is reviewing it and checking for the plagiarism. And I want to be crystal clear about like that flow chart and, and what you are allowing CSD to do should we notice that there's a large percentage of plagiarism?
Any percentage, we didn't, we said, no, we're not worrying about percentages. If they have a section.
The problem is.
You're not going to use Turn It In, that's, sorry.
Software will identify a very minor point.
Okay.
If you haven't used the software though.
If I could finish first, because we need humans.
Argument since last month.
And it's.
We've been going over that you've never used the software.
So once again, you also need humans looking at it. You can use Turn It In and it can identify whatever it wants. It can highlight whatever it wants anywhere. And then you need a human to go in and verify that whatever it says is actually, then don't use Turn It In, because that's, that doesn't make sense.
So to pay your three numbers.
Okay, don't use any software.
Number four.
It's ridiculous, it's ridiculous to ask CSD to review over 200 pages of documents to identify a specific phrase. That is what Turn It In is used for.
I'm not.
We cannot allow.
Say a percentage.
Let me just ask. Because maybe I misinterpreted what was decided. My understanding was the applicant teams were being asked to, were being told, not asked, being told that they had to run this. And they get the, so KT, just tell me if I'm wrong in this process of what they could. So the applicant team would, would run it and it would, those areas would be identified. It's up to the applicant team to fix whatever, whatever was. And it's up to them, because I get it, things, things that are common, things that might be a, a question that was asked, but the applicant team would be able to figure that out. Oh, I don't have to fix that because that's just part of the question and it was put in there. And then what was then going to happen is the charter school division was going to run the completed application. And there'd be, there'd be highlights, this, this, and this. They would then look at it and there'd be a conversation between CSD and the applicant team, taking out anything that, oh, that's a phrase that's commonly used. So they come to a decision with the applicant team that no, none of it really was plagiarized because what was highlighted wasn't really plagiarism. It was, they repeated the question, they included a quote that, you know, Abraham Lincoln said, whatever it is. If at that point in time, there's identified plagiarism, that the CSD team can now say that, that this was identified, it is absolutely plagiarism. We've talked with the, we've talked with the applicant team, they didn't fix it. It was identified, they didn't fix it.
When, when, when is it fixed?
Before they turn it in.
Okay, all right.
But then if they didn't fix it, it's now been identified again. You, you have the conversation with the team and the, and it's like, you've gone through all of the pieces that have been identified. You can, this is okay, this is okay, this is okay, because it's not plagiarism. It's whatever, I don't want to get into. Then if there is actual items that are still there that the team didn't fix, it's at that point in time, we say no, it's not a percentage. It's we've had this discussion with them. It was identified, they didn't fix it. We can verify that it's not a common phrase. It's not, you know, just a, a repeat of, you know, and if it comes up that they quoted, you know, they cited law, boom, it, it doesn't, that doesn't count.
Is that process clarified?
I don't know. That's why I'm trying to say, that's my understanding.
This is not clarified, it's not clarified. So thank you for describing what it looks like, Patty.
Show page three, because the language is there.
Right, so.
Not clear, but.
No, it's not. So what I wanted to say is, A, this is going to take a little bit of time, right? And B, the CSD has a lot of research to do about systems that, you know, like that, that detect the plagiarism, the system that KT has used, et cetera. And, and we may find out that whatever system we choose may need to have the, the documents in a particular way. So I think there's some technical leeway that I'm going to ask that we get so that, because automatically, okay, let's just say, if we look at this year's application, what we're going to see is the, the questions and the rubric and then the school's response, right? So the question in the rubric is, rubric is going to come out as, oh, somebody else has used that, right? So the way that we receive the applications to be able to review them for AI may necessitate something in. Okay, well, whatever, to detect the, for plagiarism, may necessitate that.
The system does though.
Right, that's what, that's what Turn It In does.
Maybe I'm wrong, and I think I'm trying to not overcomplicate this. But that's where, that's where that, that's where your eyes on it, when you see, I'm just going to say it's a red mark for whatever, there's a red mark there. You know, oh, that's really not plagiarism. That's the, that's the question in the application. That takes a nanosecond to look at it and move on. And it's those, so you're, someone's reviewing it and looking at and saying, oh, absolutely. This is, this could be a problem. And we'll automatically, just bypassing those areas.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know, that are, that, you know, I don't think we need to change the application. I don't think we need to change how, how we're, how the schools are uploading it in any shape, form, or manner. I don't. And I don't think we need to know now what the application is that we're going to use. You've got the time to figure that out, what'll best be working for you because we're not putting it in here that you have to use X, Y, or Z, so.
Yeah, KT, the last time I used Turn It In when I was a teacher was four years ago, so it might have changed since then. But doesn't it pop out with a, with a percentage? It pops out with a percentage, it just does, that's the program.
Yep.
And then it highlights in red the, those areas.
Even different colors.
Okay, different colors of where that plagiarism is.
Right.
And so you can use Turn It In, not deal with the actual percentage. I mean, if you see a percentage of 42 or 43%, if they see that, they're going to go, oh, God, we better look at it. You know, if they see a percentage of three or four percent, they're going to go, okay, it's fine. But then they can go into where the color, the high, well, what I was doing, I think it was only red. I don't think there was multiple colors.
Yeah.
You know, thank you, new AIs, probably pretty or not always when I was doing it. But, but it'll highlight where the plagiarism was and then you just go, all right, okay, that's our quote from, you know, Steve Calula and, you know, it's documented and that's fine. And it's all right, but I don't know. But that would work, that model would work, that model would work.
That's what it says, if an applicant is disqualified, disqualified for this initial test. What is the initial test? The initial test is not defined. How do you define no plagiarism? How do you define no plagiarism?
It is not that complicated. It's not.
It is though.
We, we have already put in here that if you.
For subjectivity.
We are not. This is, if you could stop and just let me speak, that'd be great. Okay, this is not complicated. If somebody has information in which any software highlights that it could be plagiarized from somewhere else, a human then goes and double checks it. All you have to do is highlight that and put it into Google and see if it comes up somewhere else. It's easy to see if someone took it from something else. If it is, has a quote next to it, a quotation marks and it's cited, it's not plagiarism, done. If it, if they do not have, if it is a sentence and it is directly from another source and it is not cited, that's it. That's the only thing we're looking at. That's literally the only, there's, it's not more complicated than that.
Subjective part of that though is that sentence could have been used, non-intentional. And so we're going to cancel the entire application, sentence or two sentences that are the.
What sentence is coming?
I think there is.
If it's.
There is a small piece of subjectivity in it, but.
Let's be reasonable.
Yeah, but, but the reality is, is we're looking for significant plagiarism. We're looking for. Yeah, but, but the reality is, is we're looking for significant plagiarism. We're looking for what they've hurled section.
To you. That's what, yeah, that's who's.
No, no, I, I, my point is there's subjectivity in it. There is and there will be.
Yes.
There, there is and there will be. So.
Is obvious plagiarism? That's what, are you giving me a definition of obvious? What is obvious plagiarism to you? Because to other people here, we'll have all different definitions.
That's why I said there is a level of subjectivity in it. There is a level of subjectivity.
So, I really, I really feel like Becca and I can be in two parts of the country and we can use the same sentence, and I'm not plagiarizing what she said. So, there's gotta be a point where we, we can't, we, we can't say. And if it's one sentence, they're disqualified.
If they really took a sentence from somewhere else that's easily found, that they took an entire piece from someone else's work that is published online, it's not, we're not saying the same sentence verbally. It has to be able to find.
I know, right, that's what I'm saying.
Once again, there's humans, that's why humans need to be involved. Humans need to be involved. They're not gonna put, I have a, that is, so, uh, once again, this is like, we don't have critical thinking skills to, to be at that level, is my, is my frustration. Like, we're talking about would, like, people copying and pasting from somewhere else. Like, there's a, there's a level of reasonableness. How, it's not that hard to also just cite, if you're gonna copy and paste a full sentence from somewhere else, it should be cited.
Are you saying, though, that, that, you, you're saying, to me, you're saying two things. You're saying that when they copy a sentence exactly like that, they're disqualified.
Massey, is that they.
And then you also said just now that we're having humans look over it and they're gonna be reasonable about it. So, those two things are not the same in my mind.
So be it. If it's a sentence, so be it. We're, like, let's be, that's why I'm saying, there's a level of just like, we're not talking about common phrases. That's not subjective to say.
No process. What you're talking about, there's no process for CSD to review that and actually give a qualified opinion on what is plagiarism and what is not. Where is the process?
If we look up there, it actually, to me, it's very clear.
Yes, if an applicant is disqualified for this initial test.
Says, um, that they can, what they need, request a PEC subcommittee, review the disqualification.
Process codified.
That's fair.
Process is codified, again.
Be logical.
That is logical. You have a process. But, but we need to define what's acceptable as far as that. That's what, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
So, I, I do agree that, I think there, there could be greater priority on what the initial test is. Only because I thought the initial test included CSD running it and then having the conversation with the applicant team. I don't think that's clear here.
Yeah, that's.
That's not.
That, this, this is the first time I've heard you describe it. I like that idea because I, I'm just saying that's the first time I've, so we didn't capture that here. I am concerned about there being a PEC subcommittee to review these things because your meetings can last a long time.
Was a not.
Disqualification.
A disqualification. If there was a disqualification, then we talked about a PEC subcommittee looking at it to understand.
As a safeguard.
Right. Just in case. But I do believe that, like, is it number four? Number four should say not suggested, encouraged to run the application. I thought we were requiring them to do it because.
The onus should be on them.
Because it, the first burden should be on them. And then it shouldn't be, because I think that also takes some burden off of CSD in terms of the amount that could be flagged. So that I do believe, and I thought that's what we had agreed to them. They, they need to run it before they turn it in.
If they do that, will they submit it in the, in the form that indicates where the, where the?
I think.
Or is it just blank? I mean, there's no indication, and then CSD has to run it again?
Assumption, so the presumption is they've run it and they've fixed it. So, they're turning it in as clean as they should. And then if it comes up, yeah, with, you know, fifty-six percent, then there's a problem. If they've already run it and they didn't fix, they apparently didn't fix much. And there's still fifty-six percent. There's a problem. Correct.
KT, I got a real quick question because I don't remember this. Um, if it's got a citation to it, or quotes in the citation, that's not hot, that's not flagged, right?
Typically not.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's flagged is outside of citations and outside of direct quotes in that program, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, so if something pops up at even ten or fifteen percent, that's ten or fifteen percent. And I, I'm not supposed to talk percentages, I get it, I get it, but without percentages, there'll be some, some subjectivity, there just will.
Too much.
Yeah, well, okay, but there will, but, but that twenty or fifteen percent is outside all the citations and outside, outside all the quotes, right? That's what I thought, okay.
Questions and prompts are gonna be in there. It's still likely that there could be, come up a high percentage. But that's what they're looking at it. Well, no, no, it's not that they're repeating it, it exists in the document. Yeah.
So.
Right.
Who do we thank for this? What was it, Sun Mountain? Which one did the Sacramento? Yeah, we can thank Sacramento for this lovely thing.
I'm, I was just, well, you're trying to.
Until tomorrow.
Is, is someone, is someone editing this?
I'm not editing your.
I was clear, I thought when I came in.
Just want the applicant, you want the applicants to be scared to death of plagiarizing is what we want.
I haven't touched your document.
Okay, I, I just don't know how this got highlighted pink because I didn't do it.
I highlighted it in pink in order to copy it and.
Oh, you highlighted it. Okay, okay.
I didn't change a word.
Okay, if you want to, no, 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 it's okay. If you, you can edit it here in suggest mode, or you can download it and edit it and track changes and email it to me, as long as I capture everything.
Do you, I, I feel like the commission needs to see the language.
Okay.
And approve it tomorrow.
As long as I'm, as long as I'm aware of what's being changed and what I have to fix offline.
My, my issue is the disqualification. There is no process that's codified on how they are disqualified. Because that is very subjective. There needs to be a process on how one is disqualified. If you're following into the correct category, that's great, but to disqualify someone, I think that opens us up to much, much bigger can of worms.
Well, I've always, I mean, we've had this disqualification discussion, not recently, but in the past. Um, because prior charter school directors, um, had asked for the ability to disqualify before the applications got to us. We're gonna decide that this applicant, application is too weak, you know, and it's like, no, you can't do that. So, because every application needs to be able to go forward. So, I, I am challenged with that. Unless we, unless we, unless it is a hard pass, after the discussion between charter school division and the applicant, and the charter school division can clear out and not see any.
And, and just to be clear on this.
Does any?
What, no, on, whenever they work with the applicant team, is the applicant team going to be able to come back and correct those issues?
No.
At all?
No.
Okay, that's why I wanna make sure of that, because it seemed like that was.
Or, no.
Part of it.
No, um, once you turn it in, the applicant team cannot touch that application.
Right. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we may end up in a situation where the applicant team used a particular program and we use another one, and there's gonna be some variance.
Correct. And that's why you're having the conversation with them, so that you could clear out any of those variances. And say, you know, the applicant team says, no, look at where this came from, or, so that you clear that out. It's not just an automatic
Right.
Off of a program.
I, I, if you said it the first time, apologies, Madam Chair. I didn't hear you describe that process of sitting down with the applicant and looking at, here's what came up. Um, I, I am a little concerned about the timeline, um, because it's tight already. I see Ms. Brown nodding her head. It's already tight. Um, and we have peer reviewers that we need to unleash with the application to start reviewing them. Um, and, and then if we have to do a subcommittee, definitely it needs to be a non-quorum, non-public meeting subcommittee of. Yeah, okay, but, um, so we'll need to pre-schedule that.
No, we don't need to pre, because we're not.
Even if we cancel it, I think it needs to, like, not.
Well, you know what, you're getting so far ahead of yourself in terms of, oh, now I have to schedule a subcommittee meeting. We don't even know, A, there's an applicant, B, there's a problem, C, they're going to appeal it. So, let's look at this and clear this process, and then whatever comes up after it. If, if contractors need to be hired for support to do this, then we deal with that when, when we get to it. But we don't know we're even going to have any applications.
Right, here's possible.
So, let's look at what we're gonna do with the applications and not pretend that we're building problems in.
Before, before you give us an initial language, is there, um, so, number four says the applicant passes an initial test for plagiarism. It doesn't say whose responsibility that initial test is or how that test is gonna be performed. So, I think that needs a little more definition, does it?
Just tried to add A, B, and C right after, exactly what you're saying.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah. No, well.
Julia, thanks.
The initial test is, so, the initial test is not what they're running on their own, because we don't know. But then, once they've turned it in, after they have run it themselves, then that's what this initial test is from CSD. Absolutely not. They turned it in. Once any app, applications can't be changed for any reason once they turn it in. Correct.
No. Yeah, that's.
Correct.
Ten business days is gonna put us way behind. I think we need to say three.
Oh, no.
Three business days, because ten business days is way, way too long.
Why plagiarism?
I'm gonna take a little bit of my.
Review it in one day.
I'm gonna take a little bit of my own Carl Messi who's out of here about.
Oh, that the process, and this is, this, this is a famous quote.
Yes, Lucy.
Can we just get rid of the disqualification part? It's, there's no way after June one, I'm confident that the, them running a plagiarism in May, before they turn it in, we can ask them for an assurance. We could run something after that, but the disqualification and the potential of a viewing by the subcommittee in ten days is going to basically mean that they aren't part of this process because they won't get peer review. So, can we, can we get rid of the disqualification of an application? We will do the pla, we will have them do a plagiarism check. We will verify that it's okay and move them forward.
How will we verify it? I think we, I think we do need to test it.
We can have that meeting with.
What, what meeting?
Well, we'll have a meeting with that.
Looking at their results, I think that, that the whole point is that we would take the, whatever they have and run it through and, but I, but I think the, the timeliness is really difficult. So, what if?
Yeah, I, I think. So, yeah, they, so they, they run their test.
Right.
Meet with us before June one, say, you know.
Oh, before they submit the application. Aren't you brilliant? No, I like that. I like before, so that it's.
No, no, they're not meeting with you.
She said before June one.
No, because they're not meeting with you, they're running it. So, if they run it, and then they're meeting with you again, and they're meeting with.
After they've submitted.
Yeah, so that's after June one, not before June one.
Okay, all right, so, so the instructions will say that they run it through the test and as part of the application submission, they also submit the test on, you know, what came up, right? And they might have to do this several iterations because the, maybe the first time, you know, they're finding, oh, look, this is coming up as plagiarism, and let me change that. So, then they submit it with their plagiarism test on June one, everything, right? Then we have to very quickly run it through some sort of plagiarism test. And CSD has a, has a meeting, I like Chair Gibson's suggestion. We sit with the applicant team. We're saying, we ran this through, and we see all these places that your report didn't flag. Maybe we use a different test. Um, and, and we see that this is not just a, a citing of statute or a quote from Washington or Lincoln or whatever. But this is actually a whole section related to special ed on how you're going to serve these students. And, you know, we don't have confidence that this is original ideas and plans, right? Okay, so, we say, we want to flag this as being too full of plagiarism like we wanted to with another entity. And they say, oh, no, oh, no. And then within three days, there's a meeting with the PEC subcommittee where, again, we say, here's what we think, and the school may or may not be present. May or may not be there. Okay, so they're there, thank you. I just wasn't sure how you envisioned this. And we're reviewing it line by, that meeting's gonna last like about?
Right. The others, there, there's, the only thing the PEC would be looking at is the points that are in contention.
Correct, but that could be many. I mean, like, in my opinion, like.
I guessing if it's, so, to me, if it's that many, why would an applicant team move forward? Honestly, why would they move forward? It's like, why would be this sense of appealing when it's so glaring? I mean, I know there's irrational people in the world, I'm often one of them, but why would you do that? It just doesn't make any sense. And I think we're, I think we're so overthinking this at this moment. We're not there, we're here, and we just need to get the process clear for the applicant teams. And then we worry about the what-ifs when they come up. Am I wrong?
My, that was the process for the CSD to ensure that. That's, that was my.
That a hundred percent. So, is this better? I haven't had a chance to look at it. I should have brought those little, one of the vendors at Naxa gave out little tequila bottles. I wish to God I had brought them with me. Even had little margar, packets of margarita mix. Oh, yeah. Had to be clear and well, yeah.
Tiny.
Absolutely. Well, you do what I did in high school. You inject vodka into the orange, and then you eat the orange. And I was thirteen. I know. I have. Why don't do field trips?
That's what I'm saying. They should be disqualified, and then the, if the school's like, that wasn't unjust, like, that was not, that wasn't right, then there's a safeguard. then there's a safeguard for them. To be like, that was, they're subject to being that, they're... And then, and then there's three commissioners that look at that little tiny part and say, no, CSD was right. Like, that's, that is, that's legitimate. Or, like, well, you know what, we, we see where CSD's coming from, but like, that's generic language. Anybody, like Mike and I said across the country, but I just don't, I don't see CSD.
Right.
So, that's what I'm like, the idea that there's going to be these subcommittee meetings is, to me, very unlikely, because I feel like plagiarism would be so obvious in order for CSD to be like, yeah, we're going to disqualify for plagiarism.
I mean, I think I would have, and that was not something that PEC agreed, so that's why...
No, that's, no, 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 because it, because A, number one, there was no process in place, and we were at a point in time where to say, if you're going to disqualify an applicant, to be fair to the applicant, you have to disqualify them soon after submission. But to say, a month and a half later, oh, after we reviewed this and whatever, we've now seen this after, we've already done preliminary, we've already done capacity interviews, that is highly unfair. You know, you can't do that, and I said, I certainly have no authority to do that and wouldn't do it. I'll completely own that, because that was, that would be highly unfair to do that.
Better than it was before, yes.
Because I lived in a Catholic Jewish neighborhood, I know guilt. Knowing guilt, yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, oh, oh, I bought so many pagan babies, it's not even funny. Want to know what those nuns did with all that cash.
Yeah, somebody else needs to call up on, um, the three business days.
Yeah, she can't. Yeah.
So, we can see what it is.
We need, so, the three days is that CSD will do their, like, um, decision within three business days. And then the school needs to immediately... Ask for the thing, and it needs to happen immediately, basically, in order for the timeline to not get super...
I don't care.
Yeah, that works, that way it's all done within a week.
Yeah. As long as it includes weekends, of business days. As long as we do it at a...
So, now we have six business days to determine whether it's disqualified or not?
You have three days to determine whether, and then if they request a, an appeal, basically.
Right.
That has to happen within three business days after that. So, at most, there's six business days behind the original.
Okay, and just to be clear, this is all three days, maybe not even three business days, prior to the PEC, uh, prior to the CSD, um, or the Charter Schools Conference. Uh, microphone's on if this is related to the document for the court reporter? Oh, no, she's not, oh, wait, this is work session, she's not doing it, okay.
This is work session, I'm sure the commissioners are glad to not have the comments about vodka and oranges in there.
I would have none of this, I would just have the line saying, don't plagiarize, you'll get caught.
That's what you had, that's what you had, and then when it was discovered and pointed out, it didn't matter.
Hold on, so, it did matter a lot, but, but I will repeat what I just said. It was grossly unfair to that applicant to say, after they had submitted, after they had done a capacity interview, and after everything, to then say to an applicant, no, you're disqualified, is grossly unfair. And I was not going to own that, I don't have the authority to say, no, you're disqualified. There wasn't. Well, the, so, the applicant, application kit does have a, at the top says, you can't cut and paste, you can't do this. And that's fine. If someone had triggered that when the application had been submitted, then there was a mechanism, maybe, maybe. But to, to allow an applicant team to go all the way through and have commu, and have community input hearings, I think even, that's, you can't, you know, no, I'm not part of that process. Okay. Oh, okay. Number four is discussion of, of the budget and approval of budget items. So, thank you Budget Subcommittee for meeting. I had a neighborhood emergency and couldn't, I tried to get on phone and I couldn't, I was taking a neighbor to the hospital. So, um, I couldn't get on. So, I heard some of it, but I really wasn't, I wasn't an active participant. So, I'm going to turn this over to, um, Rebecca for this.
Yeah, so, Mike and I met with Karina, and we took a look at kind of some of the things that I think there was, um, a disconnect about. Um, and I, so there's a, there's a couple pieces, so once again, I'm going to start back at the beginning of, I'm once again still glad that we have, CSD Director at least has some level of control over the budget now versus four years ago. That's still, we're still in a better space today than we were four years ago. You have a lot more staff because of that, too, which is also a huge benefit. I think there's still some work to go on, on trying to figure out the full transparency of it, um, and trying to allocate things how they need to be between, between us and between the PED. Like, we still have a ways to go as well. Okay, so, um, overall, we, we saw, uh, Karina gave a full breakdown, which I think is in the, um, it's in the folder.
Yes, Commissioner Bird, there's, and Commissioners, there's, there's item number four with notes, and that references, uh, there are notes in the subcommittee folder.
So, um, we looked over the, the full CSD, PEC budget, and really looked at each line item. Really, once again, tried to see if there's things we can move, what do we not need allocated here? What can we use in a different way? How did we spend things last year versus this year? Um, how's that looking? How's it going? So, we went through that line by line, really trying to determine if things were in the right areas. Um, there's a couple places where, where we're thinking we can move things around. Um, but overall, I think the biggest question, and this is nothing on Director Chavez by any means, but one of the biggest questions that Mike and I had at the end of the meeting was, we are wondering about the entire 2% budget. So, we did make, we're making some requests to ASD, we do want an accounting of last year's, um, the PED spending from last year, how that all played out, how, you know, what they swept, what they used and not, like, all those things, we, we were requesting that. We're also requesting a reevaluation of this year's in total 2% money evaluation, because we had a big concern, because we, we do, we believed as a budget subcommittee that we had about 600,000 to 900,000 extra dollars that would likely be open for sweep, like, to get swept at the end of the year again, um, this year. So, based off of last year, and the year before, and the year before, right? We keep having this, like, pretty large amount of money that's getting swept, or, I mean, at first it was going to general fund, now it's getting swept more effectively, at least staying in PED, but, um, last year, there was a... So, we're always working off 2% estimates, right? It's so difficult to get an official dollar amount, we, we're never going to really get that until we get the end of year spending, really. So, we're always working off estimated amounts, and I think in our head, we were looking at, in our heads, we had this, like, 5.2 million was the entire 2% spending for, for this year, is what we had. But, um, ASD has communicated to Karina that this year, the entire 2% is 4.6. So, it did raise concerns for us, um, you know, our enrollment has gone up, we have more charter schools, SEG's gone up. So, for the entire allocation for SEG, for, for the 2%, to go down pretty significantly was very alarming to us. So, we did ask Director Chavez to go ahead and reach back out to the budget group and raise our concern with them, and reevaluate the 2% allocation, because right now, with the current allocation, it does basically remove all that excess funding we were trying to allocate so it wouldn't get swept. It basically removed it from us, so it has put Director Chavez on this really tight budget that we've never had to really deal with in the past couple years. Um, and so, it's put her in a bad situation, because we thought we had more money than they're saying we do. We were basing a lot of decisions off of that we did have that money. And so, that still is being clarified and looked at. We have a couple different options on how to support her in getting that information, because we're also worried about, you know, how long does it take to get responses? How often are they responding, and how quickly? So, we've talked to her about some different ways that we can try to help support her as budget subcommittee. Um, and so, we're, we're going to let her try to go the normal route, work with budget, try to get our concerns, like, explained. Like, if that is correct, then we would like an explanation, a very logical explanation as to why those numbers are correct. Um, so, that's what she's working on. If she doesn't get that response within a timely manner, we do have a Plan B. We don't want to go to it, but we do have a Plan B, um, to just file an IPR, you know, and, and go that route. We don't want to do that, right? Like, we, we're in this building, they're right upstairs, we can, we can, we could just do...
Real quickly, last year, or 5.2, this year, 4.6, correct? And that's where...
So, so, um, during the budget subcommittee, Becca did share, that I had shared with you all, the 5.4. Um, so, I found the email where I got that message, and it was described to me as a projection, okay? We've also learned that there was some over-projection of the, um, unit value and of the, um, and of the... So, I don't think that it ended up being 5.4 in the end, but I'm trying to get that 100% clarified. And the other thing I want to do is get, um, so I'm pulling together like a historical document that shows, um, fiscal year total MIM for preliminary funded 2%, hour share, PED share, actual MIM, again, CSD share, PED's share, um, and then one final column that would say, um, the reversion amount, or, and the swept amount, so that you have a full historical picture. But when we look at, um, the numbers, I, I do, I, I, I think that, um, we're going to find that that 5.4 is not like what actually there was.
Okay, so, but from 36,000 feet, we're somewhere around 5.2, 5.4, and 5.4, no, we're 4.6, 4.7 from last year?
Okay, so, so last year was the preliminary, and what I, what I need to get is the final, Bridget, maybe you know what the...
Okay, okay, but...
4.69, um, last year for the preliminary. I, what I haven't verified is the final. And then this year's preliminary, which is what we're working with now, right, is 4.77.
So, you went from 4.69 to 4.77.
So, so they make projections, right? And there was, we understand, they, they over-projected last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, they did over-project, they had told Karina 5.4 million. From what we know for sure, they definitely overestimated that by at least 250,000, is what, at, at, at least, yeah, they, they made an adjustment.
5.4 to 5.15?
Sure.
Okay.
But we're, we still don't know, I don't think there's clarity from the budget group to CSD to us, what actually the final numbers were, we don't have clarity, we don't have clarity on that. So, that's what she's working on now, providing that clarity.
36,000 feet, give me the 5.1, that's fine.
No, this is, this is what we...
Let me just finish.
That's what we...
But then, now we're like 4.77, right? We have three new schools, right, additional enrollment in our schools, and a higher SEG, correct?
Yeah, you made our exact argument.
Okay, all right, from 36,000 feet, that's what, that's what it looks like.
That's exactly right, so that's why the historical...
I just wanted to get it in my head, that's all.
You're, you're exactly, that's the exact...
I've dealt with budgets for 40 years, so...
Should the fact Deputy Secretary told us when we met with her that they were, by the way, we're going to use that's, that money that, that would be swept.
Which we did, we did get an update from them that that money did not actually get swept, is, is what they're, they've been reported to, that that did not actually happen, that that had come from prior administration more, and that the new administration didn't actually follow through on doing that at this time. Um, but yeah, there's still, I think we still, like, we have this disconnect, right? Like, your, that, your exact understanding is where our heads were also at, so that's where, that's why the historical document is coming to fruition. And I think that will help increase that transparency. But also, one of the things that we cared about most, once again, is, okay, well, we still want to figure out funding for our performance framework project. Like, that is very important to us, we sent out the information, so that's what we spent time, Mike and I really went through with Karina, like, okay, where can we, where can we get money to fund this project? Um, there is, there were already, there is a little bit of excess unbudgeted funds that we were like, okay, that, we can definitely use some of those over there, and then we started looking through the REC contract to see what we could find that's already in the REC contract to be able to support it, which was, which is how I learned about a possible agenda item that came up. So, I was like, oh, there's 100,000 towards school closure, like, let's move that and use that towards the, the funding. But then we were like, oh, well, we might, there's a chance we need that, you know? On that, on that day, we, we still like, we might need that. So, so that's the kind of stuff that we're working at, is where can we take money that's not being expended or not allocated, um, and put it into the, and prioritizing the performance framework, those, those mini-grants. Um, I don't, I think that's, which, um, now...
So, last year, last, um, like, our last year, um, the money was allocated for Epicenter, right?
Yes.
And what about the, what about the technology in here? Was that last year or the year before?
I think we actually, there was some last year, I think we have a little bit this year as well, though, right? Because, so, for Epicenter, last year, of the technology for Mabry Hall.
Mabry Hall.
They added some last...
Yes, we did. It was like 14,000, something like...
40,000, Epicenter was 40,000 last year, it's 140 this year. You know about technology upgrade, what, what we did, what Dr. Russell spent a lot of time doing and making super clear was the fiscal year '24 expenditures. So, if you go into that, uh, budget subcommittee folder, you can see what we spent for fiscal year '24, not what the PED side spent, and the revision amount may or may not be in there. It was more than it should have been, because there was some money that was lost in space. Um, we were told we couldn't do the audit reimbursement project, but it had been approved, and it never got transferred to the SWREC, which is how it was going to flow. So, that money didn't get swept, and it didn't get spent appropriately, because there was, again, disconnect in terms of what we were being told and what was actually processed.
So, was that money swept?
No, that money was reverted to the tune of 700,000 is... It went to the gen, it was reverted to the general fund, yeah. And so, you know, that makes us look like we're not spending the money. But I do think that there's more expenses this year than there was last year. That's, that's going to explain some of why there's not as much availability of funding. For example, um, the HR costs associated with the Charter Schools Division. We, we had one person who was ESAR-funded, still doing some site visits with Charter Schools, but no longer on ESAR, right? That money has left, and so she's fully on Charter Schools, um, and she's supporting a lot of the Charter Schools, uh, work. She, um, also, we had an increase in insurance costs, and, and some people, um, yeah, got, we upgraded a couple of positions, like, Ms. Brown's position was created to be staff supervisor, so that we could have a, a more built-out technical assistance and training team. Um, also, the biz ops position that, um, that Jessica held has been, um, reclassified to a financial coordinator position, so that's a higher-level position that gets paid more. Um, and same with, uh, my assistant Samantha, she, she was, uh, an assistant, she's been, um, her, her position was reclassified for biz ops. So, that's a higher-level position that gets paid more. So, also, our, did I already say our insurances and the raises?
I don't think the expenses are the issue, that's not...
I mean, and, and the truth really is that the expenses were not, were not very significant.
Yeah, yeah, the issue is the projection, that's the issue, that's what we got to focus on.
It really was.
It, it was about, so, year-over-year, so year-over-year spending... It, it was about, so year over year, so year over year spending, we, we are, we allocated about 120,000 additional dollars towards P E C expenditures. And there was about another 100,000 towards employee benefits that had to add. So it is, we are spending more legitimately, 220,000 more. We still, yeah, that's, and then you, you basically are on the budget subcommittee with how Mike and I were, the, the exact, this exact conversation is what we had. So yeah, that's why basically our action items now are, we're still working with Director Chavez to allocate as much of that 600,000 as possible that we already, if we can move as much as we can, that we have access to.
Right, right.
Moving it over to that area as much as possible.
Perfect.
Second, secondly, like, because we can control that, right? We're gonna try to do with what we can, with what we have. Secondly, is this historical document that, that Director Chavez is talking about. Getting that like, where, what, what would it look like two, three years ago? What did it look like two years ago? What did it look like last year? What does it look like this year? So we can see, I think that, that alone should help us with that trend. That alone will, should be helpful. But also, once again, just trying to increase that transparency, trying to increase the understanding of where the funds are going so that we don't have the like, wait, that doesn't make sense. That make, you know, so we are trying to provide the opportunity to kind of make it make sense. Because there are, there's definitely pieces that, right now for us, which is where I know you all are feeling hearing about it. We, we're like, okay, yeah, that doesn't make sense. And we, we do, Director Chavez really, she's really trying to make it make sense, but I don't think she has all the information yet.
Just that we have a meeting next week to talk about the.
Yeah, so, for, as part of the budget subcommittee, we're, we're talking about these mini grants. Right now, there's only been three schools that have responded to it at this time. Which it's, I mean, it's very early, usually they wait until the day before something's due to turn stuff in. Well, it might be better, I mean, it'd be good, so I think what might be more helpful, before we get into this in today. We're meeting next week to really go over the plan for what this looks like. So it'd be great, instead of doing this right now, it'd be great if you put every question into an email and send it to Director Chavez, me, Mike, Patty. And that way we can discuss it next week and we'll respond to you by email with all the answers. Because I think right now, I, we, I don't want to sit here and give you a bunch of like, I don't know, I don't, you know. And maybe we know every answer, but I just don't want to get in, I don't want to, we are about to go through and like really solidify some of that stuff next week.
Thank you, Becca.
Like, as you talk to charter leaders, do talk to them about it. Be like, look for that email from Patty, it's, it was sent out from Patty, make sure they know about it. I've, I've visited several schools since that went out and they just kind of glaze over it, right? Like, they just, oh, yeah, I did kind of see that email a coup, was that like two weeks ago? I'm like, yes, that's important, you know? So do, if, if you have any conversations with charter leaders, just remind them of it. Be like, hey, there's, there is a program, we're trying to help increase your, your ratings on your performance framework. And then, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we have, I think a, a little F A Q might be helpful for, for schools.
I sent out to all my schools a message with, with a link to the questionnaire again, just to remind them, you know, for the, for the deadline. Okay, I will. Well, no, I sent, then I sent another email to my schools. So I can send you that, yeah, that has the, that has the link, because it just says, just a reminder, you know? So you can easily copy it. Okay, don't expect it until.
Oh, and then for item C, we talked about it and, and we were, and, and there's like a little note for you in your, in the, in the folder that she, she's available very minimally, very, very minimally. And honestly, Mike and I, when we were talking about, we're like, actually, we don't know what she would do necessarily right now for us. We don't actually have anything in mind, so we're kind of using, we're actually like, actually, we think that 10 grand might be better used for a school. Since we have this program now, it might be better to move that over there. So we did talk to her about, like, unless something comes up where we feel like Naomi would come and help us in like a really meaningful way, then we're not gonna worry about that money for, for a contract for her. And then you saw a thousand dollars towards boards of knowledge, yeah.
That's cool.
Um, and then.
We're sweeping that.
And then, yeah, until, until we figure out, until we figure out, so we do have to determine if, if there might be more money in our budget than we are aware, than we have been told by the current projection. If the projection goes up, then I think we can start the I G A amendment to get some of that money moved over. But we will need budget, the budget division to be like, oh yeah, that projection, that four point seven seven is incorrect. And we would need them to allocate money in order for us to do anything different with the I G A. Because right now, we do not have money to allocate additional funding to the I G A at this time. But that's why we're, we're really, I mean, we have our fingers crossed that maybe they're just under projecting so much. And if we get a, a little maybe closer to the accurate projection that we're thinking we might have, then we can go ahead and do that, that section. So that hasn't been moved forward, because there's no, there's like not a funding line that Karina has to be like, okay, yeah, move this money over here. There's, there's not a funding line she can like point to, to be able to start that process yet. So we're taking baby steps with getting, really looking at that overall 2% projection.
P E C logo?
I can share those images? So I got the first rough draft today. And there needs to be some cleaning up and I wanted to talk to you guys about some ideas. Do we have logo forward, like we could put them side by side? Oh, you can't?
I don't know.
He's gonna see if she can see, put the new logos and Katie's image next to each other.
New ones are good.
They said just do the new one.
I don't need to say.
We, we've been through that before.
So this is the first, this is the first draft. So I can, I can have them add lines.
It's unwritten right now. The students don't know their.
We, we might need a pen.
Well, I can get them to add lines in the book, I was thinking of having them. Are you guys sure?
Yeah.
The overlay of the cap, that's what I had messed with before, whenever I was playing around with it. I just think it looks too wonky, it just doesn't fit. Just the, it doesn't fit with everything else in the logo. The way that the, that it's designed, it just, to me, I know, I didn't like it. That's why I left it out. Something, I don't know, it's just, it's one of those.
And the first one, it doesn't look as, doesn't look.
I like the border of the outside of the.
Uh huh.
I don't like the teal and white wavy line in the second one, so that's why.
No, I, no, but I like the fact that this, the second one is, the background's a little brighter.
You know why? Because that turquoise line is thinner, so I can get them to thin that turquoise line, that circle. That was one of my, yeah.
Is your microphone off?
We, we do have a virtual audience.
It is like the school that did their renewal hearing video and there was Dolores Huerta and the background was a pot plant.
Can, can she, can.
Patty, is it okay if, can we let Consuelo go through the changes she would recommend? And can we have, can we let Consuelo, she had, she said she had some recommendations, maybe we could go through those. That might help direct us into something meaningful.
I was thinking number one, making that turquoise circle thinner, like the second one. And removing those wavy lines.
Yeah, get rid of the wavy lines for sure.
And I was wondering if we should make New Mexico a little smaller, like public education?
Yeah. So which one?
I would just like to know what you.
Yeah, can we get, yeah, yeah, so we, so we remove the wavy lines, we make the public education commission a little bit bigger.
Number one.
Or the New Mexico smaller, one or the other.
Would you like to replace with the hat?
Yeah.
Different hat?
Yeah.
I think I sent you some via email, Katie.
It's just an, I think it's an Adobe structure.
They're going with number one.
They're actually, well, it's the orientation of it. So in the second one, you see the whole structure. In the first one, it's because that, that dark is lighter in the first one. Definitely. I stay at a trailer court, so what's the matter with a storage unit? Yeah, but if you have a diploma, then it's, to me, a diploma's gonna look too much like the book, you know? Yeah. But I do want in the budget. New plaques with the logo.
There you go.
Well, that you can do, because you'll, you'll be able to take the image and put it on whatever you want. I'm gonna make a dartboard out of it.
If you did make the turquoise line thinner to give more space in there and we still feel like, take out the graduation path.
Right. Take back the house.
And then the house doesn't have any significance.
No.
That, and then just have the ZIA like coming out of the book. And then it's a lot more simple.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody's gonna see that, but do you, do you notice the difference in the ZIA symbol in the book? On the top, the ZIA symbol goes behind the book. On the bottom, the ZIA symbol is kind of like, it's a weird.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think there needs to be, like, the bottom one is too thin, the top one is too fat.
Yeah.
One thing Mike said that I liked is instead of it being four, what kind of leaves are those? We, okay, instead of four, just make them two long ones, just to also, once again, just get rid of like the busyness.
I don't know why it kind of.
You, you love busy stuff, so that makes sense. I'm sure you would.
Definitely get rid of the story.
What are those waves anyway that they put in there?
It's what he, it's sort of like what.
Water in there?
Water.
Sort of what he had on the other one.
Mexico's known for its lake.
Yeah, for our, for our shoreline. It's important.
It was what he had, if he had in his design.
We're gonna pare this down to where there's nothing on there and we could have gone, we could have done this all ourselves.
Yeah, that, yeah, that book did have lines on it. So are we, are, so are we good? I'm not.
Oh, you like the top one, the border and, okay.
Yes.
I have enough to go back and have them.
Thanks. So I think we've actually done all the four, because we did the, yeah, so we're done.
That also was in, one of the, I was part of the P E C increases. So part of that 120,000 dollar additional that we're spending this year, part of, it's part of the attorney contract.
She's using, we're, we're, we're leasing. Okay, all right. No, I did, I was, I, I shut my mic.
That was a while ago, it's been a lot since then.
Yeah. Okay, discussion of rental of school facilities for non-school events and publicity related to those events. And this comes, this actually comes up quite often. And I'm contacted locally, I'm contacted probably several times a year. Because entities end up using a local charter school's facility. And they, they are more than likely a political entity or they've got some political presence. And they, I get questioned, has anyone paid rent, you know? Why are they using public monies to use the charter school? Because it's a public school. So that I, we felt that it was an important reminder to schools that if they are renting their, if they're, if they're allowing the use of their facility for a, I guess, political or religious purpose. Well, of, well, of four, I'm not sure about it. I'm looking at it at the point that, yeah, I guess maybe for profit, but if they're, if you're, if you're looking at a political or religious entity, the school needs to make sure that they are being compensated for the custodial work, the electric work, the, any utilities, that there's a fair compensation for the use of that facility that's being remitted, remitted by that entity. So that there's no, it doesn't look like the school is supporting a political or religious entity. And that's, that's part of, what do we call it? Well, they, well, that's up to APS. You know? There is, if there's not compensation for it, because there is a separation of church and state. So that you can't just let a religious, my understanding, you can't just let a religious group come in and use it. And then therefore, the school is paying for that entity's use of the facility because they're paying the utilities and so on. So then you're saying the, okay. I mean, I know from Down by Me, if we choose to, we have to hold a meeting, we have to pay insurance, and we have to pay insurance. We are for sure for that with, with Los Cruces Public Schools. We have to run insurance and we have to pay, there's a fee that covers the costs of, you know, because the, so.
Yeah, I guess I, I would just say, I don't, there's not really a lot to discuss unless we have a legal
That's.
research about it, because unless they're, like, if it's not prohibited, I'm not getting involved in it. I'm not. Like, unless it's explicitly prohibited, or there is already something in law that says this is how public buildings should be used, or if there's something that's already there, then I would be happy to ensure our schools are, know about it, that they're enforcing it. But if there's nothing there, I'm not, I'm not even gonna touch this.
And that's why I brought it to this, because it came to our attention again, so.
Did, is there information?
We decided before I did anything to see if you guys were interested in.
Oh.
So we just decided to put it on without, because it came up again, there were anti-donation.
Anti-donation law.
And the, the other issue is that one of the schools put it on their, their school website, but it was a political flyer.
Once again, I, I, I guess, yeah, sure, I, I think it'd be helpful to have the legal analysis of it.
Didn't know if, if we put it on here because it was raised again during the political cycle. The chair said it's often comes up during the political cycle, because that's when people are looking for faces and.
I would totally support this kind of stuff being looked into before you bring it to us. That way, that way, we're only discussing if it's like an actual.
Do we actually have authority over that, those decisions? I mean, or is it just school, on, on the school themselves?
Yeah, and it, and was it a violation of the contract, you know, you know, you, the schools are, they do agree to, you know, be free in public schools, so maybe so. We just, it just came up, we decided to see what you wanted to do. We can look at it a little bit more and see if there's.
Yeah.
Right. So I know from my experience down by me, there, the school district is compensated, because there are churches that use. And, and I know that we, when we have approached to have meetings, we've been told, anti-donation, we can't let you use it, you have to pay for it. So, and same thing with the city council chambers. We've been absolutely, we've been told absolutely no, can't. We, it was common practice by us. We used to, no, they said anti-donation, they, they were actually, there was a complaint to the AG's office. And they showed us the, I don't have it because it was through the municipality.
Essentially, you have to rent the facility.
Correct.
Right.
And it's not, it doesn't have to be a for-profit rent, but it has to be a fair compensation for the use. So, you know, like for us, I think LCPS charges us for maybe a three-hour meeting $65. But then we, but we do have to run an insurance certificate. So. I'm not gonna get into that. It's a conversation. I don't have anything for, I don't think reimbursed. So I think I'm good for that. Subcommittee updates. Where am I look? Oh, I was just getting there. This is, it's always on there. Oh, it's got a full. No. No, I don't know why that Charter Performance Subcommittee update epicenter's sitting there. And, you know, we, we haven't met, so I, budgets.
I, I think it was on there to start you all having that conversation.
Okay.
And I think that, okay. Well, epicenter rollout update has been, okay.
Right.
Well, this is on here a couple of times then. I mean, we've got several suggestions for subcommittees to look at.
Well, I think that goes to, if we meet. Okay, budget is done. Policy. Oh, I think there's the, so PED has, we got notification of rule hearing from PED. So the question is, and I'm guessing, um, the rule is, is up, correct? It's, it's attached. But I, I, I know I'm on the notification for rule. So I get, I, and anyone could get on it and get notified when PED's going to, you know, hold a rule, change a rule, whatever. And we got notified of the new rule hearing. And there was a question as to whether the PEC wanted to offer any comment on that rule.
It's a state, it's a PED rule proposed. It has a lot, the suggestion is to have the policy subcommittee take a look at that and see if you want to provide comment on it. There's a lot that isn't relevant, but for example, the section on waivers is in that rule. So it might give the PEC an opportunity to comment on that. So there's a couple of things in here that we think, and maybe with the title for Subcommittee Update should be there, but are things that the committees might look at. We can pull that, but it's a long rule. And so the, you know, our thinking was to have that, that Subcommittee meet next time and, or meet and see if you want to make comment on it.
This is two separate things, right? Okay. I was thinking this is, the way it looks on here is that it's one. So I was, I was like, they're doing a lottery rule randomly? Like, that's, okay, that's weird. Okay, so two separate, there is a new rule, I saw, I did see that one, but I was like, I don't remember lottery, okay. Lottery's not being addressed yet still.
Correct.
Okay, and this is a different rule that might affect charters?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
The lottery rule, there has to be a decision made as to, you know, and I think, did we create a Subcommittee for that? Or? The Subcommittee's supposed to talk about the Subcommittee?
No, the Policy Subcommittee.
Oh, gotcha.
You had talked about sending that question. Right, but there.
So the Policy Subcommittee has to meet, that's the bottom line. You are, you are, yeah, I am, I know. You're on policy. Yep. Yeah.
Do you want me to do the indicators?
Depends on when it, when we're meeting.
Do you want me to do? So, well, just, just following up on that same, following up on the same thing of suggestions for the Subcommittee is there is an Indicator of Success and Performance Framework Support Program subgroup. I think that the EC was looking to ask that Subcommittee to look at the issue of early warning signals for schools and what kind of action might happen.
That's literally the committee.
Yeah.
That's what we do. That's all we do.
But it's this conversation around the school that you're gonna discuss tomorrow, which is when, when issues are being raised, what do you guys want to do that is different than the intervention ladder? There are some common things that come up.
I don't think that's, I think that might be different than indicators of success work. What I'm hearing you say is different than I think the work that we're working on.
The reason it is an indicator of distress, there, there's a common, and I don't know what you, what this Subcommittee might come up with, but there are things that come up that come to the EC. So low board participation, membership falls below five, student, low student enrollment, numerous parent complaints are like four common examples. And right now, the only tool that you have so far is the intervention ladder. And that intervention ladder, there may be something before that. So it just seemed like that's the right group to take a look at it first, see what you think. Is there, I guess it's a question of something other than the intervention ladder, and if you guys think there's a different Subcommittee that should look at that.
Well, I think it's, it's, this is, this is, those things that you're talking about, maybe they are part of the indicators of success that we create. But what I also hear you saying is, when there's a problem about it, we're doing it not on any specific, like, we're not even thinking about specific school. We're doing so general, so generic, it's about any school ever. And I think when it gets to, that there's a problem in a certain school, we have not contemplated individual schools yet. We're still, we're still at the level of what are the indicators that we want the governing boards to look at? What are the things that we want them to do? How do we want CSD to be able to interact early on before it becomes a problem? Once it's actually a problem, we're, I think that's where we do drop off from this work. Because it's, it's all about preventing problems. And then it does become, I do, I see where you're talking about, that maybe there's a, there's actually, there's three levels, right? There's like the, the indicators of success, which is, this, it's more of the like internal reflection from the school side. They're looking at it, they're doing continuous improvement, and we're promoting that, we're supporting that. When there's an actual problem, I think that's when technical assistance comes in, that's when, you know, things like that. I think that is the second phase, right? Once they get a yellow on a, once they get a yellow, right, then there's a technical assistance provided, then there's.
Or even before. I mean, I, so, so one of the things that you, what I'm hearing is that you are, and, and, and this sort of gets to where Commissioner Ingham was speaking during the renewal hearing for Masters, not being aware that maybe some complaints have come our way, right? So the balance that we have is, CSD deals with a lot of things. We find out there's less than five board members, we find out somebody's not in epicenter, we find out that they haven't fully submitted their 40th day NOVA report. And so we're constantly working with schools to intervene, provide technical assistance, make reminders, listen to leaders and advise leaders. And, and that's background information that you all don't have. And I don't know that, you know, I'm feeling like you, you feel like you should have some, and I think, I'm wondering, where's the line?
I think that's what we're talking, I think that's exactly the question.
Right, and, and then, where's the line, and then what is the PEC stance? Because I do think that, let's just say that, that the process is, I take it to the EC, right? Okay, so I think.
The thinking was to have a subgroup, look at this question, and bring the conversation back in a more nuanced way to the PEC. I mean, that was the thinking.
Do you think, I, I actually totally see it, and I see, I actually see where the challenge is, and I'm super worried about where that, that too. Because step one, I think that's easy to, to figure out the line. I do think step three is also easy to figure out the line, like a school's in trouble. Like, they are in trouble, they're going on the intervention. It is that in-between time, I get it. I don't, with the indicators of success work, I don't think we're going to that second level yet. So I'm worried about adding it right now, because we're, we're, we're not, we're not close on the original work. So I'm worried about adding it to our plates, because I don't know if we're gonna get to it quicker. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a, I understand, because I actually, I'm, I'm worried about adding some even clarification, because I do think that kind of ropes CSD into some pickles. Sometimes when you make too many, like, when it gets here, 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 we want to know kind of thing. But then it kind of limits CSD, but also then I know, without any of that, maybe it's also hard to be like, no, I should bring, like, to have any clarity either way. So I understand where the problem is. I don't know if it's a different Subcommittee that maybe could help add on to that work? Because I just don't know if we're gonna get to it with the work we have on our plates with what we're doing with indicators of success.
I mean, in a practical sense, right now, I think it's just it's what, that it hasn't happened. But I think if board membership falls below five, the PEC should be notified of that. Because that's a problem, and that's, and that's.
Well, do you think it's a Subcommittee that can go through this, Patty, with you? Like, I think your train of thought is exactly where, I think, like, what are the like absolutes? Like, if it gets to these, then you don't even have to think, you're like, I just know to do it? Would be, is there a Subcommittee that would be best suited to looking at that with Director Chavez and like collaborating and seeing like, I mean, is there, I mean, we could do it in addition to what we're, what we're doing now, but.
Kind of, I, I think it'll start to deflate what.
What we're doing. I don't want to, I don't want to overlook it.
I would say that
The policy.
Probably the closest would be the policy.
And then we can, there's four of us that can work with you.
That'd be great. That would be really awesome.
And we can go through those different, and you can be really general about like, yeah, I get these complaints, and I'm, I'm waiver on like, should I or should I not?
Right.
You can kind of give, tell us where you especially have those like heartburns. And then I do think with the four of us and like, coming up with like, well, we for sure want to hear these things, can help create some guidance for you.
Well, and then the, the thinking is like all subcommittees, it would come back to a fuller conversation of this group, but it felt like it warranted that thinking before it came forward.
Okay.
All right.
And can I have some clarification around, you're not meaning that they've dropped below five, but they haven't, they have the 30-day.
Correct, correct.
伸展至 beyond.
Yeah, we're, we're not ringing the bell because you just got noticed today, yeah. They, they still have all of their, unless they all leave, yeah. Okay. Well, I don't think this is gonna take long. I don't. I don't, because we're just on numbers, number six. I don't, because we're just on number, number six, so. Well, the legislative subcommittee hasn't met, board acknowledgement, awards, did you meet?
No, we haven't.
No, so there we are, indicators of success hasn't met, so there we are, I told you this. Well, even number eight is, I think, really quick, because number one, um, I think we could hold off if anyone, like, maybe tomorrow with our own comments about the conference and so on. We don't have to get detailed about that today. Um, L E S C and L F C meeting, I'm not there, they're meeting, so there we are. Indian Education Advisory. Okay, see, um, Capitol Outlay. Okay, you're on.
Okay, at the P S C O C meeting, I, I notified the chair, uh, last month that I wanted to have a conversation about the lease reimbursements. Um, and I notified P S F A, and then they promptly put it on the awards agenda and, and determined a motion to just leave it flat. And, um, just by P S F A's recommendation, I believe. And then it came up in, so in the, in the main meeting, and I only had the weekend to respond to it. I did, I wasn't, I did bring it up at the meeting. I, I was pretty adamant that, that needed to be, that we needed to discuss having it increase. And then, and, and some of the other committee members were also questioning at that point, even the ones that were on the awards committee, questioning, why did we come to this conclusion? But then it got voted on and, and approved, but I did vehemently object. And, um, so I was, I was pretty upset about it, to be brutally honest with you, and I'm not gonna, I, that was not gonna just, well, I'm, um, next, they said, you should have known it was, it happens every November. And I'm like, uh, okay, thanks. So anyway, next November, we, we're gonna have, I, I, I would need anybody's support that wants to help me with that. I want to have a meeting with P S F A about it, and before they, uh, before it goes to the awards committee, and I want to have our side to be mentioned. I don't, I don't want to let that go another year.
So just let us know one way or-
Yeah, and I, Joe Giann said I should have talked to Matt Paul, and I was like, I didn't get a chance to talk to Matt about it. And I did the best I could, but it didn't happen.
Nothing significant to report. That, that's subjective, yes.
School Boards Association?
Um, yes, spoke with Joe Giann regarding their legislative agenda. He said the executive committee is gonna be getting together, actually happens, uh, right before the end of this month, um, to decide what their final items are. For transportation, he said is certain, is that there will be money for transportation, um, just all the way around. Um, budgeted for transportation is to whatever districts and schools need. Not having a P S separate line added, not having, yeah, this is what it costs for the district, for the state, this is what you're gonna allocate, no one's gonna have to dip into anything. And I said, that's something that we can definitely get behind, and we might want to make sure that charters are part of it. He said, he'll let us know as soon as the executive committee finalizes that.
Nothing significant to report.
Is that the library committee? So I'm curious, so how do they feel about the book and the logo, they want lines? Uh, yeah.
Start the P E C meeting up?
We are, so, we are adjourned until tomorrow morning. At nine, it'll be fun.